Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open up the Crawford Memorial Library Board of Trustees meeting of Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, we need to make, I think we need to make note that the meeting's being recorded.
Yes, you're right. I didn't put that on my cheat sheet. Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that try to remember to use everybody's names in first and second so we can get all the information correct. Alrighty, so let us begin with the minutes from December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. I think everybody had a chance to look those over. They were sent to us. Any corrections need to be added or changed or anything?
Yes, I would like it to state.
We're about page stuff.
Hold on one second, I want to find where it is. Oh, I thought I marked it. I caught it because I ended up reading it because Pat sent a second one. And I was like, oh, I guess I didn't read that the first time. It was in regards to the committee that for hiring. So I don't know where that is. I really thought that that was in here.
I don't see it here. Board is working on a hiring.
Where is that?
Permanent Director, it's on your staffing report? That's the last line there.
No, it was. Where the heck did I read that?
After one line or underneath it.
I knew I should have marked it. Maybe it's a new one because I've got two. Hold on one second, I'm sorry. I would like the, under the staffing report, the board is working on hiring a new part, new permanent library director. After the brief discussion, the board agreed to form a search committee to review resumes and conduct interviews. We didn't review resumes, we just conducted the interviews.
I sent you resumes.
Everyone that applied?
There was one additional, and I explained to you who the other ones were.
Yes, right, but we didn't, the board.
I can send them to you if you feel better.
No, I'm just saying that that didn't happen, so I just didn't want it worded that way. We just conducted the interviews.
I listened to the, I watched the video, and that's what was said, so I reported what was said. As it should be in minutes.
Yes. Okay, so yeah, that's what was said, and it wasn't.
That wasn't accurately reported, that's all.
That's, yeah, but that was during the meeting and you did the minutes. All right, okay. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion for the December fifth minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I will say we accept the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Is it amended?
As amended, if maybe I don't.
Okay, as amended, do I hear a second?
As amended to what I questioned? Or what's the amendment?
I thought you were amending it when I walked in, so.
Whatever, it's not.
Well, let's, okay, not amended, okay, not amended, as presented. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Richard made the motion, Kate seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Director's report, please, Cheryl.
Sure, just go through quickly, we're short on time tonight. So professional development and meetings attended. I went on to a Zoom workshop on First Amendment auditors that was put on by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners in a law firm in Boston, which was pretty interesting. I think we're in good shape if that ever happens to us, so. I've also attended a few CWMR's administrative trainings on the new Aspen catalog. CWMR's is coming out with a new patron catalog, so the catalog will look completely different come sometime in March, when it rolls out, the first week in March. So I've been doing training on doing a lot of the back end stuff to make it look better and to personalize it to Dudley.
Oh, great, thank you.
Staff will be trained on that sometime in February. Those trainings have not come up yet.
You have to do that, or will they do that?
No, they'll do that, the staff will.
So that's something that's online, when patrons go online?
Yes, the online catalog is changing. We've done director's interviews for three afternoons, evenings, that's been going on. Staffing report, we have hired a new youth services librarian. Courtney Exstrom, who is currently the library assistant at the Pearl, is going to be our new youth services librarian, so she's moving up into that position. She has not begun yet because we're still in the process of filling her position before she moves into that. So actually, it was posted in-house in town last week, and today it went on the NBLC website for the full-time library assistant position.
So full-time, as in how many hours?
Thirty-seven and a half hours. And the youth services position is also thirty-seven and a half hours. The director is the forty-hour position.
And no one within Dudley applied?
No one within the library or town hall or town car.
Okay, so now it's outside.
Yes, now it is outside. The rest of my report was just kind of updating you on some special projects that each of the staff have been working on. So I won't go into that, but they've been pretty busy, and we're trying to get everything in order. On collection development.
I would make mention of one of the things here, because of the staffing report. I think this is the first time we've seen the number of individual people on staff as taking charge or being involved in and having some accomplishments. I think that's a good thing to have them by name.
It's nice to see. I know they have been doing things like this sort because I've caught them, but it's nice to have it in the report.
Right.
Collection development. So I've been ordering for juvenile YA and adult collections, which is actually my favorite part of the job, collection development. I love doing that. I love reading all the reviews and finding the best books out there for our library and our patrons. But I am also going to be happy when the youth services librarian takes over. We do all the YA stuff too, because of this time-consuming, if you do it, if you do it right.
Have you had a chance, if I may, through the chair, a chance to work with Courtney on some of this yet?
Yes, we are, we are, and I've actually, I just got her a subscription to School Library Journal, which we, the library hadn't been getting, which concerns all youth services procedures, programming, reviews, upcoming titles, other things like that, so I think that'll be, that'll be a tool for her. I also ordered, actually, the library journal one, which is for the adults also, so both of those.
We weren't getting either one?
No, we weren't getting any, any professional journals.
I wonder how long we're getting them.
I never heard of them before. This is, this is a first for me, even any empower. Excuse me, Paul.
I think it's important to look at reviews before you order.
Oh, definitely.
So as I've been ordering, I tend to like see a, see a nonfiction book that I think, oh, we might want, but I don't know exactly if we have one that's like it or an update, so I go into the stacks. And what I've been finding is that so many of our nonfiction collections are so outdated. So we've been trying to, we've been weeding those out and ordering certain sections to update those, so we don't have, so we don't wipe out a section, but don't replace it, so we're replacing it.
So let's go towards the books.
So we did that with the travel books, and actually, I asked Courtney today, and she's going to do that this week, is to do a social media post about all our new travel books and showcase our new travel books.
Good idea.
Things like that, so.
Thank you.
And law, the law books are really extremely old.
Law never changes.
So things like that. And digital purchasing too, I've been continuing with that, based on what our digital holds are, so.
So you're getting caught up with expenditures.
And that's what you make the library work.
But materials expenditure too, you're, that was behind.
Yes, right, because it was behind, so I'm trying to get that to where we should be too. The sprinkler system, facility update, the sprinkler system was inspected and passed, which is always great when we pass anything. When the library lost power, a couple weeks ago, we found out that quite a few of our emergency lights weren't working. So we've had the electrician come in, and actually Ben happened to be there at the night.
Lucky me. I got another education.
We got quays building on urgency lights.
Yes, we did.
But the electrician, actually, he did come today.
He did.
And he's making all of the plans about, so, and teaching the custodian as well how to do some of those, some of those things, and how to replace things when necessary. And he's coming back tomorrow to do some more. We found out that we actually had quite a few problems, more problems than we thought, so.
But that's, no.
So the light's not working was, the light was burnt out, or was there a problem with each light?
There was a problem, lots of problems. One of the problems, for sure, we know, is that one of the boards is totally burnt out, so one whole section of the emergency lights weren't on in that section.
And we've replaced them before, because on the boxes, they're dated. Since we've been open, a couple boxes of boards have been replaced. We found this out, and so he's doing it again.
And today we found out there is another board that will probably need to be replaced. And there's some, there are some lamps and batteries, so. It's quite extensive, what has to be done, but it's for the safety of the building.
Do we have a completion date for this, or is that, we have a completion date for this, or is this open?
It needs to be done this week.
Done this week, okay, thank you.
And he's great, I mean, he came, you called him, he was there within hours.
Yeah, he came right away.
He was right within hours, I just happened to be there, and nice man, and.
Nice to hear that you didn't make the call and you weren't waiting to hear back.
Exactly. Exactly, and, you know, I said make sure we have his name in the binder. Because he's, he's good.
There's not a mandated electrician that the town requires us to use?
Not that I know of.
I think when it's over a certain amount of money, we have to put it out to bids.
Yeah, again, so many bids and all that, but just like repair jobs.
I know Renad is the, Renad is the HVAC that the town uses, and I have a library uses them too.
We also use, yes, we also use them, we have a contract with them. Town, on the town side, and reports are due on March twenty-fourth, and Pat has graciously stepped up, stepped up to, yeah, stepped up to do that for us, and I thank her for that. The FY twenty-five budget was due January twelfth, that has been submitted. Annual inventory list was also submitted January sixteen.
Who does that get submitted to, the annual inventory?
The clerk.
That was something new for me, I didn't have to do one for any other two.
And Don did it, you know, stepped up to, I walked in on that one too. She says, I'm looking for, I went, let's see if we can find.
That's great.
Don stepped up and was doing it there.
Miscellaneous, we got some donations, some nice donations from the Crawford family, which is always appreciated. One to the friends at the library and one to the library gift account. Right now, we're, for the month of January, we're doing our gift basket giveaway at the adult circulation desk. So every time somebody takes out items, they get tickets for, you want to buy them something? It sounds so nice, it gives an incentive for something to do for January. The Dudley Agricultural Commission contacted me probably soon after I started and told me that they received a rant to do some programming and asked if we'd partner with them, and they have them at the library, so, so those will be coming up.
Great, that's nice.
Hello, library website, I hope you had a.
I had a chance to look at it, like, I don't know, it just didn't, I'm like, okay, I don't see much of a change, except like, some things were missing, but I was like, I don't know.
Well, it's, I mean, it's not populated with all the information yet, it's just in the draft. But if you, I think it's more impressive when, if you pull up the current website and pull up the, the new one in a tab and look at them.
Oh, okay.
Because that's when the whole staff is going, ooh.
I just did it on my phone, I probably should do it on my desktop.
So pull them both up at the, you know, on the screen and compare. But then it's not, they are not populated with information, it's just kind of a prototype, but that's, you know, basically the look.
Did you look at the logos?
I did look at those logos, yeah.
Is that Piper Web, is that, that's software that we have?
That's the same, yeah, that's the same website developer that we use now. Program information is there, twenty-three programs, one hundred and seventy-five participants. Lower than normal because obviously we have not been having storytimes, as we do not have a youth services librarian, or we didn't in the month of December. Upcoming programs, we've got Deb Hudgens this Thursday at ten-thirty, or eleven, eleven I believe for Sing and Swing, Winter Wendoland. Jean Walker Paint Night, that filled up, I think, within twenty-four hours, it was crazy.
She is very, yep.
We have John Polakowski Art Exhibit, he's going to be setting up for the month of February establishment. I believe it's Seaside at the Cape. We have another children's program during February Vacation Week, Tom Knight with Library Bookie. February twenty-second, we have an adult program, Christopher Daley, kind of tying in with President's Day. He's going to be doing a presentation on the assassination of Abraham Lincoln. I've actually seen a few of his programs in the past, and he's fantastic. He's entertaining and he has so much information, it's, it's really, he's, he does a nice program. And then I have in there the agricultural program dates, we, I do not have the topics for those yet. And then looking ahead to March, we have Celtic Music with Jeff Snow. The only other thing that I found out after I wrote the report was that we are also going to do, starting the last week in February, Tuesday mornings at ten-thirty, last week of February through March, every Tuesday, the Partnership Council is going to be coming in and doing a giggle, I can't think of the name of it now, something that giggles and.
Wiggles and giggles?
Wiggles and giggles, thank you, yep, they're going to be doing that. And I thought that might be a nice transition where the new youth services librarian is coming in, that, you know, that'll be a program that she doesn't have to actually do herself right away, you know, because she transitions.
So do they register for that through us or through the Y? Is it the Y program?
I'm not sure, we, because we just, just got, you know, starting to figure it out.
I didn't know if it was through the Y.
It's through the, the Y and the Partnership Council, yes.
Oh, okay, the Y typically, they were the ones that ran the registration.
The Y and C and Family Partnership. So that will be happening this winter.
That's good, I've had people ask about that.
Oh, here it is, yes, Wiggles and Giggles, ages two to five, Tuesdays at ten-thirty, February twenty-seventh through March twenty-sixth. December twenty-twenty-three circulation is there, not happy, not happy.
Can you tell us, obviously the numbers are here, for example, total adult, one thousand six hundred and fifty-nine, is that an increase over November, or is that consistent with previous Decembers? Do we have?
You don't compare November with December, you compare December with December.
Alrighty.
December with December twenty-two to get an accurate.
Right, so December twenty-two, do we have a number of, for comparison?
For the adult circulation, we were down fifty-seven, so it was very, very close, very close. The children's circulation, however, was down five hundred and forty-nine, and again, no programs, no children's programs. It does make a difference, having a children's librarian and doing children's programs, there's improvement right there.
And the young adults?
Young adults, fifty-eight, we got nine.
Nine. So, better things to come.
The big decrease was in the, in the children's circulation, which I expected. The digital circulation, which was one thousand one hundred and eight, was actually up two hundred and four from last December.
Really?
Actually, I was thinking to obviously take advantage of the override because I knew that one of the books that I received said you jumped the line.
Because we, because we get a robotic, yeah.
Explain that to, Cheryl, explain that to people, the whole board.
Okay, so if you have a hold on a popular ebook, sometimes your wait can be six months, believe it or not.
Are you talking to Libby app?
Yeah, the Libby app, yeah, the Libby app. So what I've been doing is going into our part of, our part of the Libby app, and I can see what items have the most holds for Dudley, just looking at the Dudley library patrons. I can see what items have the most holds. So actually, I do this every Friday, so every Friday I go in and I look at that list to see what has the most holds, do we own it or not, in, in the format that people are asking for either ebook or digital audio download. If there's a waiting list more than three, I buy it from the library. So when that happens, as soon as we get it, which is, I mean, when I order it, it's there. As soon as we get it, Dudley patrons are going up.
Bump up the list.
Bump up to the list. So you might not get it the first time, because maybe there's another Dudley patron that.
What I found, though, that once you approve that hold, you know, it doesn't remove it from your holds list. You have to go back in.
Oh, really, okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Really? Oh, I have, oh, I'll have to look.
Only on the ones where it says, you know, you've jumped the line, or, you know.
I don't think I've gotten anything that says I've jumped the line, but I.
I was surprised when I went in and I saw it was still sitting there, the one that I had put in.
I know I've changed delivery dates, if I'm in the middle of a book, I do, it tells me a book's right, I'm like, no, 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 and I've changed the dates.
That's a great feature, you can deliver later, yeah.
Yes, I like that feature.
I love that feature myself, too. Another thing that I just started doing this month, is the digital ordering. You can also do, it's called cost per circ, and it's a little bit different. So what I'm talking about, we're ordering our normal ebooks, it's usually a price for either twenty-four checkouts or a year, or something like that. You're not buying it, it's kind of like you're leasing it almost. But with the cost per circ, it's set up a little bit differently. You can choose these books, and all five of you could be reading the same book at the same time, you're not waiting in line, they're all, they're available right away, and we're paying a certain amount each time somebody borrows it.
Oh, interesting.
Yes, so it could be every time somebody borrows, I think a popular book right now, Demon Copperhead, we're paying two fifty, two dollars and fifty cents for each circulation on that item. So what, what I also do is I cap it, so it doesn't go crazy. We're not paying, you know, whatever, so I can cap it at whatever, you know, you want it. That's another way, a good way to get books into people's hands. Sometimes, for the really popular ones, it doesn't make fiscal sense to do it that way because it would end up costing, you know, way too much money. But I, I tend to look at what deals they have on those. Sometimes you can get for like ninety-nine cents a circ, I'm like, wow.
That's worth it, keep people happy and reading.
Just a question, if it's two fifty, is that two fifty for the three weeks, or does that cover the three-week renewal period?
That covers your entire circulation, your entire time, yeah.
Thank you.
That's great. I mean, those numbers are pretty high for ebooks, digital. I mean, I'm on Libby, I'm in my car all the time, I've always got a book plan, so I definitely.
Never got into it.
I, yeah, it took me a little while, but once I get into it, I do.
Alrighty.
Any questions? Oh, budget. Any questions, must question.
So about averaging about fifty percent remaining in many, over fifty percent.
Wages and salaries were actually, I, I looked at it this morning, and we're forty-eight percent spent on that. Of course, this is a strange year, we've had unfilled positions for so long, and also added hours in some positions, so, but, but still looking, it's a little washout. I guess the other thing I'd point to right now is utilities are way down, and that's because we, since I've been here, we have not gotten a real electric bill, we have credits. And right now, we have over five thousand dollars in electric credits, so that's been saving us a lot of utilities.
Well, those solar panels, and, and not a lot of snow. And, and not a lot of snow.
Yes.
Any questions about the existing budget?
Yeah, it looks good.
Take a peek at next year's budget? That number at the bottom does meet the MAR. That's what we're working on. So we keep the state happy.
And obviously the.
Does the town administrator know that?
Well, yes. Oh, yeah. That was, she put that right into her narrative. She did.
The director line item, obviously we don't know for sure when that's going to come in. We have it at the top of the salary as a placeholder.
Superb.
I would say, I think February is going to be interesting.
Exactly.
We were asked by the town to keep the FY25 budget, no more than two and a half percent increase over FY24. And right now, this is a 2% increase. So.
Impressive.
Yeah. She's working with the MAR and we're working with the town and she's done a good job. Keep things moving.
Yep.
At this point, it was mentioned last night at the selectmen's meeting, and I guess I got it wrong the first time around. Apparently, the library budget will be given consideration for Board of Select and FAA on February 9th.
That's, I was going to ask you.
Which is a Friday date.
What?
Uh, that's kind of what I was thinking. I thought it was the 8th, but apparently as I understood it last evening, it was the 9th. I may need some clarification on that. They've got some funky dates. I mean, they're meeting with the school committee on the 14th on Valentine's Day.
So nobody will come?
So I.
I'm sorry.
Well, they've asked.
Date night.
They've encouraged people to come.
Your date.
It's going to be such a wonderful meeting that, you know, there'll be hearts and roses all over the place. And everybody's smiling and going away happy. And I'm not sure that's the case. But maybe that they're trying to create an atmosphere or a thought anyway. But again, those dates are coming up soon.
Did the tech say a time for that?
Oh, I think that, well, they typically meet at 6:30. So it should be, well.
Doesn't seem like the right date.
The dates, what's that?
February 8th.
February 8th. Yeah. So he kept saying the 9th yesterday.
8th and 14th.
Okay. All right. Thank you. But again, if anyone has any doubts or concerns, check the town website. There should be the meeting posted there. And eventually agendas will find their way into that as well. So just to be aware, it's going to be an interesting month.
It is.
Uh, quick, Priscilla, you can say what you sent us if you wish. That one liner.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, say it. Because I have to ask about that. I have a question about that.
So there was a discussion at the last meeting about carpet cleaning.
Yeah.
The library. When, when we were doing the inventory report and I was looking at the list from last year, I noticed that carpet cleaner was on that inventory list. So I asked custodian about it and he brought me to his closet and there is a commercial carpet cleaner at the library. And he, and he told me that he does it at least two times a year. He said he'll be doing it again once we're past, you know, the winter solace and sand and all of that. So.
That's cheaper than having somebody come in.
Yes.
It is. I highly, I like that. But in the past several years, didn't we have a company come in? Why is that?
I think we had furniture done.
Was it just furniture? Oh.
We had furniture done.
It was so.
I mean, I would have guessed yes before hearing this. But I mean, but George, George is good that way.
How long have we had that?
You're asking we?
Probably since the beginning. When we had money, we bought a few things. We bought a bit of equipment.
Snowblower and lawn mower, I'm sure.
Lawn mower.
We had a.
The scissor lift.
Scissor lift.
Yep.
The scissor lift that doesn't reside with us.
Exactly.
Okay. We lent it out.
Yes.
Yes, we have a commercial carpet cleaner.
Good.
It resides in this building.
Good neighbor policy.
Yes, that's a good neighbor policy.
Excellent.
My recommendations for carpet cleaning would be maybe we could increase it to three times a year or four times a year.
Or certain areas. Do walkways.
I wonder about like, is there maybe we can look into doing a little bit of research, the new director can look into doing a little bit of research of like finding maybe a different detergent to try. Like, is there something compatible with this machine that might be a little, you know, stained?
Yes, intense.
Yes.
Or pre-treated.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bringing a visitor at 7?
Yep.
So, okay, we'll keep going, please. Okay. Um, the free, fine free borrowing, we had a little bit of information sent to us. Cheryl?
I couldn't open it.
Yeah, okay.
I looked at the Freddie Henry library website.
Pat sent something. Was that what you had sent us?
No, I sent something else.
Yeah, I couldn't open it.
And I noticed they had three languages.
From the math board of library commissioners.
Yes.
But I think, if you saw the map that you sent, I mean, Dudley is that one little lonely one down there.
So there's 161 CWMRs libraries. 147 of those libraries are fine free. So we're at point of the 14 in CWMRs that is not fine free. So all the libraries like Pat said on that geographically around us are, are fine free. CWMR has voted to go fine free in 2022. The only reason that we didn't do it at that time is libraries who grandfathered. And so any new library that comes on into the CWMR's network has to be fine free. No, you know, no sense about, we had a choice. I don't know why we didn't make that choice to go fine free a while ago, but.
I don't know why we have to go fine free. I'm going to tell you that right off the bat. Like, what's the downside? What's the upside? The downside? Like, give me, I like in the data.
We don't get the money.
For one, we don't get the money. And it's very little money.
We don't get the money?
No.
It's the town.
Oh, but it's not in our account?
No, no. Just like the copier. We don't get the copy machine. I've had that fight a couple times.
I didn't know that.
I've had a couple, I've had that discussion a couple times.
Okay.
But.
So last Friday, I had Don add up the fine rate for us to, so we knew what the total would be. So as from July 1st to now, we collected $47 in fine.
And my other flip side of that is everybody's around us is fine free.
Auburn isn't.
Auburn is, I think, the only one that's not.
I just think that we might as well stay with what's around us. Because if, you know, if somebody gets a lot of fines, I'm like, well, I can go to Webster. Or I can go to Charlton.
It's not, it's, for one, there's also been, been all studies done about it. And it doesn't affect, like you still get your things back. It doesn't affect that at all.
Yeah.
What it affects, it's a good, it's a good thing. It gives access to the library to more people because they're not afraid of fines. Some people are really afraid of fines. Some people cannot, even though they're minimal, cannot afford that and will come to the library because they think they're going to be fined. You still have to bring your materials back. So what happens is basically now, you check out an item, you get it for three weeks. It automatically renews. So you actually have an item for six weeks after you check it out. After that six weeks is over, if you have not brought that item back within 30 days, 28 or 30 days, then you receive a bill from the library. Once an item is billed, your account is blocked. You can't take anything out. That's how it is now.
So they couldn't go to the Webster library and take anything out? They can't go to any library?
Right. Once you have a billed item that you haven't returned. And it's not even paid for. Because as soon as you bring that overdue billed item back, the bill goes away. And with us, the fines would stay. If you go fine free, the fines are also wiped out. Both things are wiped out. I can give you an example. I answered the phone the other night. It was a woman calling from Grafton. She said, I just returned a Dudley book in Grafton. They told me I had a fine on it. And she questioned me. She goes, you're not fine free. And.
She returned it to Grafton?
Well, it's just a library loan. And you should probably take another Grafton. It's just having our, our item. And I said, at this time, we're not. And I said, you know, what's your name? Let me look up your account. And she owed 10 cents or something. And I said, don't worry about it. It's off your account. I mean, it's just good.
PR, yeah.
Especially where everybody else.
So how often on a, on a, like, how often are you getting people that come, oh, I have a, and they can't pay it?
Honestly, I'm going to tell you right now, and I don't even ask them for it. Because I don't believe in it. I don't.
We do have fine free Fridays.
And here's another thing. Who has, who has 40 cents in your pocket? I don't think they have cash on me anymore. Never. So if you don't have cash, then, oh, you have to go to that computer over there and pay online. I mean, this, it's just barriers, you know? The American Library Association has been touting fine free for, since 2019. It's not a new thing. I think we did it in 20, probably 2019, 2020. In Charlton, it's been a while.
Well, based on your recommendation, I would make a motion that we go fine free.
I think people are going to love it. And, you know, we do have fine free Friday, but now everybody can come to the library on Friday.
Hopefully we get a little publicity blurb on that somewhere along the way.
Because of that, we're considered partially fine free.
Webster's fine free?
Webster's fine free.
So.
I would dare agree with, with Richard. A little publicity blurb, like, you know, you know, we, we appreciate our patrons and please come and borrow items and what have you.
We want him to go out the door.
Make a big thing.
Yeah. So we have a motion by Richard.
You could stand in front of the library breaking chain or something like that.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Richard, a second by Joyce. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Paul Beams? Board member comments and observations?
I would, I'm going to jump the gun and start. But I would just thank Cheryl for all she's done. I think she's opened her eyes in, in many areas and brought things to the table that, as I've looked around various meetings, some jaws have dropped and things that we maybe weren't fully aware of or not aware of at all have come to light. And it's been, I think, a very positive experience. And we're going to miss you. The short time that you've been with us, you've, you've done some, some, some great, some really good things. And thank you for that.
Very good things. I mean, the next, the permanent librarian, whoever that person may be, is going to thank her too without even knowing him. Mind that person like, yo, she's got a lot of things up to date.
She can help that transition.
Absolutely. That's fabulous.
I can.
That's fabulous. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if it's in order, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn the open portion of our meeting. I have a motion by Richard, a second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Pat, you got the lingo, please?